There you go, there you go.
Hey, I'm Harris Sweetard.
Oh, great.
And I'm a good scientist and I'm friends with me.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm still, I need to sign, you know, when you're actually coming up with it. Huh? Okay.
Hey, how you doing? Good to see ya. What? Am I ever here?
Yeah, we changed. We changed yours from the beginning.
All right, good. And Commissioners, are we ready? Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone here in the chamber and online or on the phones and call to order the meeting of the Katati Planning Commission for Monday, the nineteenth of June, 2023. We'll start off with Carla doing our attendance roll.
Krishna Long. Krishna Moffett. It's not here. Krishna Berman.
Here.
Vice Chair Jalardi.
Here.
Chair Savage.
Here. All right, thank you. And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Any questions or do we have any?
I'll move, we moved, we approved the minutes of our last meeting.
Second.
All right, and we'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Long. Krishna Moffett is absent. Krishna Berman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Jalardi.
Yes.
Chair Savage.
Yes. All right, moving on to changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes?
No changes, Chair Savage. However, there was some communication received after the agenda was posted. That has been provided at the dais for the commission to review, and there's copies available in the rear of the room for anyone of the public who'd like to review that.
All right, thank you, Noah. Moving on then to oral and written communications, this is the opportunity for the public to come forward and have a chance to speak. Does anyone who would like to speak at this time? Go ahead and step forward.
Hi, my name is Richard Tierney. I live on twelve Gilman Ranch Road, and I apologize, first time being here, and I'm not sure if this is the right time to be doing that, but I did receive this flyer about...
Could you please speak into the microphone so that we can hear you?
Sure. Anyway, I received this flyer about potentially putting a new interchange with lights on Highway 116. And the only reason I'm here is in your flyer, it said that if I don't express concerns at this meeting, then I may not have the opportunity to challenge this. And of course, I live right on the corner of West Chicago. I've only briefly read the potential new development next to Lowe's, which is a fairly large development, which will add additional traffic certainly, and certainly they're going to have to have an efficient way to get out onto 116. My concern is by connecting West Katati, are you gonna maybe encourage the flow of that additional traffic to go into onto West Chicago, West Katati and into a residential area? So, and I'm not sure where I stand on this, but I wanted to get it out there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, we'll move forward then to matters at hand, and the first...
Chair Savage, we do have some Zoom attendees.
Okay, do we have anyone there that wants to speak?
Let's see, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine if you'd like to make a comment. And Chair Savage, looks like that'll end public comment.
All right, thank you, Carla. Okay, the first matter we have then is to present and receive input on the proposed reconfiguration of State Road 116 and West Katati Avenue. So I'll turn that over to Noah and his team.
Thank you, Chair Savage. This item is actually a Public Works project. We are presenting it to you as the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for the city to, as a first step in the public engagement effort on this city project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Public Works Director, City Engineer Craig Scott and his consulting team.
Good evening, Commissioners. Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Tonight's item is a proposed State Route 116, 116, West Katati Avenue reconfiguration. Staff has been working with consultants, Farr and Peers for the thirty percent concept design and M Group for the environmental review for this since, I think, November, December last year. So, so for four or five or so months now, we've been working way at it. The intersection is in the city's capital improvement program for a few years out and is dependent on securing grant funding to make that happen. Presenting tonight will be Jeff Rubendahl from Farr and Peers with support from Nina Price, and who is a transportation planner engineer. Then the staff you see sitting at the table here, City Manager Noah House and myself have been involved in this from the beginning as well. So, all of us are here to, after the presentation, to respond to questions you may have. And I just have to mention, I should mention that the primary purpose of tonight's presentation is to solicit public input. We've been doing this for a few months now, as I had mentioned, looking at, working with constraints to get and looking for a few alternative configurations that we're going to present tonight. So, because it's a comprehensive presentation, we'll just jump right into it.
All right, thank you. All right, got the presentation up. So I'm Jeff Rubendahl, the Project Manager for Farr and Peers. Can you hear me, Iris? Is there way, hello? Is that any better? All right, here we go. So I'm Jeff Rubendahl, the Project Manager with Farr and Peers. I'm a registered civil engineer and traffic engineer and roadway safety professional, working with Craig and his team on evaluating kind of what's, what the realignment of SR 116 and West Katati Avenue should be to address some of the safety and access issues that are well documented there, as well as taking a look at the broader corridor as it relates to other land use development projects that may or may not be in the pipeline near long term. So we kind of look at both kind of near term needs for safety and access, but also how it fits in the longer term vision of the corridor. Yeah, if you want to try. Okay, so a little bit of backstory just for everyone who isn't as familiar. In the recently adopted Local Road Safety Plan, the reconfiguration of the SR 116, the West Katati Avenue intersection, was identified as one of the highest priority safety projects for a variety of reasons, including a documentation of collision history, as well as some of the other geometric and configuration issues and lack of appropriate pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, both along our SR 116 and across SR 116. It's been identified, or was identified, in the previous Bike and Ped Master Plan as a need, a project, and it continues to be kind of at the forefront of needed safety projects within the city. The geometrics, because of the skewed nature of West Katati Avenue, makes it really difficult for vehicles to get out of West Katati Avenue, but also the lack of left turn lanes and separated from the through lanes makes it very problematic from motorist on motorist potential collisions. So the idea is to kind of address all of those safety issues while taking into account the kind of the state of the practice as it relates to bike and ped infrastructure. Next slide. So in the LRSP, the Local Road Safety Plan, the intersection was evaluated, collision history was reviewed, and through that whole process, it was identified as a high priority project. The elements of the project that that include, that the LRSP resulted, what recommended, were signalizing the intersection, providing turn pockets for left turns at the intersection, as well as adding intersection safety lighting. In the Bike Ped Master Plan, in addition to those features, adding bike lanes, what are called Class Two in-road bike lanes, were identified in the Bike Master Plan from several years back, as well as adding sidewalks or adequate pedestrian infrastructure. The pedestrian bike, the Bike and Ped Master Plan is current as the next agenda item. You'll see, we'll be talking about that update, which kind of updates the thinking behind how to provide appropriate and safe bike infrastructure, which we've already included as part of our assessment to kind of make it really the state of the art, kind of the state of the practice for bike safety and bike facilities, which we'll get to in a little bit. Next slide. So currently, this is just a snapshot of the current intersection. There's a city-owned triangular parcel in between West Katati Avenue and SR 116. There's also two development parcels up at the north that have had various levels of interest in terms of land use development. And what, one of the objectives of this study was to really understand the opportunities related to all of that future land use changes, so that this vision or this idea for this realignment can be compatible with kind of state of the practice for adding, addressing the safety challenges and access challenges, but also providing appropriate bike and ped infrastructure. One thing to note, SR 116 or State Route 116 is Caltrans right-of-way. So the decisions to make changes in the state right-of-way do go through Caltrans for review and approval. There's a whole flow chart of how the review and approval process can be. Our subconsultant Mark Thomas is on our team to help us navigate that process, so that everything we do sets us up for success to be able to design and implement.
Does Caltrans have any financial responsibility, or is that all on the city?
I can, typically, there is a maintenance agreement in place between Caltrans and the local entity about who pays for the pavement, who's paying for the watering of any plantings. So it's all in the details, and I believe that that maintenance agreement would need to be updated as part of this process.
In terms of the construction, it's a Caltrans roadway, so they are the ones that would normally do capital projects on their own roadways. But if a local jurisdiction has an interest in some project on their roadways, they, we could, you know, we could pay for it and they would manage the process, because ultimately, they own the roadway when the project's done. And as Jeff was saying, then there's a maintenance agreement that deals with ongoing costs.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide. So, yeah, so the, one of the objectives of the project, as previously stated, was to realign West Katati Avenue in a way to tee up, or kind of turn it to be more on a ninety-degree angle with SR 116, and to really provide appropriate ped, bike, and vehicular access while prioritizing the safety of those most vulnerable, what being pedestrians, cyclists, and other folks as they are navigating kind of across or through this intersection, both in the near term, but also as part of the broader vision as the corridor potentially has additional development. Next slide. So we did look at a couple different alignments, understanding that there's some right-of-way elements at play. The, from, on the left, we had an alignment that kind of ended with a skewed intersection, with a potential future roadway to the development parcels. Then we looked at kind of a non-ninety-degree angle in the middle, and then settled on what is, what is a more traditional intersection at ninety degrees on the right with the little pink line there. Next slide. So the first one we looked at took into account, we tried to maintain all, or have all of the proposed realignment occur within city-controlled property as it tees into Caltrans right-of-way. And what we found is that that offsets, that would result in a potential future offset intersection with the proposed access for the development parcels on the north by about fifty to sixty feet, which is not ideal, which, so we kind of quickly looked at some other options. Next page, next slide. So we tried to figure out if we could actually realign it and actually bring it back to as close to a ninety-degree intersection as we could. Resulted in a skewed intersection like you see here, which for different reasons is not ideal. So we kind of looked at that and weighed some of the goods and the bads and realized that that wasn't quite good enough. Next slide. So then we looked at kind of understanding that the, one of the objectives for the study, the study of this is to really understand what is the best for the community, what is the best for a longer-term safe approach to this intersection. So we looked at actually taking the realignment through an adjacent parcel and actually have had some preliminary conversations with that property owner about potentially, because of the way that the right-of-way line is, actually potentially doing some sort of land swap so it doesn't require purchase or acquisition of right-of-way as kind of one of the opportunities to make kind of the appropriate tee intersection. And generally, that it seems on paper, at the planning level, feasible from that perspective. Next slide. Next slide. So now that we kind of studied the southern realignment, I kind of overlooked a little bit. The northern edge, we are assuming that the, any proposed development on the north side of the roadway would follow previous applications and current thinking of an access roadway for both projects along their property line, which is what we're aligning the proposed southern approach to. Now, once, so in the future, when that north approach is built, you have a four-legged, a traditional four-legged intersection. The next layer to that is understanding what is the appropriate traffic control device to control the movement of people, whether in cars, bikes, or on foot or other non-motorized pieces. So first thing we, because this is a requirement per Caltrans processes to look at kind of a whole toolbox of options. We looked at a side street stop control and reconfirmed what's already been confirmed over the years, that it's not ideal, even with left turn pockets, the delay to the side streets, the lack of control for crossings, really quickly screened that option out. The middle option shown up here is a roundabout. This is a state-owned facility. They do, Caltrans process does require evaluating the feasibility and geometric feasibility, geometric and operational feasibility of a roundabout. So we did look at that, and you'll see something here in a bit. And then we also looked at a traditional traffic signal per what was recommended in the LRSP, the bike plan. Next slide. So not going to go too much into this, but a side street stop control would not work for future, as traffic volumes increase, the lack of appropriate crossing safety treatments on a side street stop control, very, very quickly screened out as something we'd want to spend any more effort considering. Next slide. We looked at kind of in concept what a roundabout footprint might look like in this area. In the area in blue are the approach roadways, the area, it's a little slight, hard to see on this, but there's a green border around it. That's kind of area that's reserved for landscaping, pedestrian facilities, potentially bike facilities. So the overall, the footprint of a roundabout would be pretty substantial, probably in the neighborhood of two hundred or so feet diameter circle, so which would take quite a bit of the available land outside of the existing roadway. Next slide. Then we looked at what a traditional traffic signal, a signalized intersection would look like. We looked at near-term traffic volume projections to understand whether a left turn lane, whether left turn lanes, right turn lanes, and how many through lanes might be needed, which we'll be showing in our concept as to what the traffic volumes have shown. Next. So we can go into the details about the benefits of these different traffic control devices, but we felt for a variety of the constraints we already mentioned, that a traffic signal would be what we propose here with the appropriate and highest level of pedestrian and bicycle improvements that provide kind of near-term and long-term connections for all folks that are in cars or not in cars, whether in bikes or walking, walking or other non-motorized devices. Next slide. So we're going to walk through what the proposed concept that we developed, that is a signalized intersection. Go ahead, next slide. So the, what's drawn here is our ten percent concept, which is a signalized intersection that provides crosswalks for pedestrians on all floors, all sides, or inappropriate bike crossing treatments for cyclists to make maneuvers in several different directions in exclusive signal phases, meaning that in many cases, if not all cases, bikes and pedestrians are going, have the right to enter the intersection when no traffic has a green or a permissive maneuver allowed. So the presence of the right turn pocket, right turn lanes, those are actually for somebody, for a motorist to be stopped and actually have a right red arrow or other supplementary signs that prevents them from making a right turn while the pedestrian or the bike crossing is activated.
So that is the solution to the concern we might have about a bike path being in the way of a right-hand turn, is that there's an arrow for the turn?
That's what we're, that's what we're moving forward with.
So that then would preclude the motorist from turning while the bike is, so the bike would already be through the intersection?
Yeah, and so there's a concept called the protected intersection that has a lot of those same components, where it allows for the turns to happen while maximizing the lines of sight between motorists and other users. So we're going to take some of those components into the final design as well and to kind of weigh the trade-offs on providing the appropriate level of safety for everybody, which is, you know, as high as we can, but understanding what signal infrastructure might be needed to facilitate that.
And what I'm looking at here is it moves into three options and then back to one lane on the other side. So whatever's going forward is back into the one lane. Either you're turning right, turning left, or going forward into one lane. So somehow, it goes from three to one. That's what I'm looking at on both sides.
Yeah, and a little bit more detail, what's shown here is a right turn pocket and a left turn pocket in both directions. The length of that is really dependent on what future traffic volumes need to make that maneuver. Caltrans has a very specific requirement for how you calculate that, and it's, they typically are long, because per Caltrans design standards, the, all the slowing down of what motorists does happens in the turn lane. That's how it is designed. So it looks like it may go on forever, but it is finite, and that'll be determined as part of the final design process as we refine some traffic volumes. But it's really not so much to provide additional capacity, it's really to get turning vehicles out of the way, slowing down, to come to a stop so that they have, where they have a red arrow or whatnot at the intersection. And in a couple subsequent slides, we'll show kind of what the bike, how that affects, how that is, interacts with the bike facilities.
Does Caltrans require vehicular detection in the pavement on just the 116? Or would it also be required on the side streets?
It would be on all approaches.
And turn lanes as well.
It wouldn't necessarily require the right turn lanes on the side streets, just because that's such a minor treatment, but we could prevent that from happening on a red through signage or otherwise. If you want to go to the next slide? So there's a lot here. I'm not going to go into each bullet point, but each color circle represents a different category of consideration. So just at a high level, kind of what I just talked about, the light blue is talking about the protected right turn lanes, meaning that, meaning that a pedestrian and cyclist, when they have a green light to go, the right turn has a red, whether it's a red arrow saying you can't turn right right now, or a signal that has a right red, right red arrow. Other elements like the presence of a median to kind of break up the approaches and other striping through the intersection to guide cyclists and pedestrians across the intersection when it is their turn to do so. The purple, the dark circles there, those are some of the bike and pedestrian facilities that we, that we're showing. The proposed, just talking about cycling for time being, the gray line on the very top is a proposed Class One shared-use path, meaning that is where just bikes and occasional pedestrian would be, completely separate from the inner, from motorized traffic until they get to this intersection. When they get to this intersection, they then become part of that crossing operation. So they'll get, whether it's video detection or some sort of button they push or something that will signal to the traffic signal controller to go red for motorized traffic and green for the crossing. You can do it with video detection or a button or some combination of the two.
And on the Class Two bikeways, that's striping between the vehicular traffic and all along the 116?
A Class Two bike lane by definition is a striped bike lane where there is one stripe, or maybe two very closely placed stripes between a cyclist and the adjacent travel lane. Current practice is that Class Two is not a standalone, good enough bike facility if you can fit something bigger and better. So what we're showing here is actually what's referred to as a buffered bike lane, that in, within eight feet, it's got two feet of markings and six feet of a bike lane. It just so happens that Caltrans requires having eight feet of space outside of the travelway. So by putting in a buffered bike lane, we're meeting Caltrans requirements and providing a redundant, redundant bike facility in a good way, where if I'm, if I'm riding my bike into town from going eastbound, I can choose to be up in a Class One shared-use path, or if I feel like if I'm a Spandex rider wanting to get out there and I have the ability to be on the street in my own space. And there are elements at the intersection to provide me, and if I'm in the street, I can actually, what's called a two-stage left turn. I can go cross the street with a green, wait safely in a green box, and then cross SR 116 to either get into that Class One path or just go further north.
And the buffer is just the distance between the lanes, there's not a barrier of any time?
There often is like channelizer posts, like just surface-mounted plastic posts. Those are effective at just being a little bit more conspicuous, but they don't stop a car from coming across, so I think there's opportunities to do more, but what we felt was a fully off-street facility in the Class One on the north end is fully outside of the roadway, and it provides kind of an exclusive way for cycling to happen through the intersection without having to share the road with traffic going at fifty miles an hour or more.
And that'll be two-way for bicycles?
Two-way, so it's wide enough, wide enough for two, a bike to go and eat, a bike to pass another bike coming at them in their own space, and enough space for a pedestrian to be next to them. So the exact width, it could vary, but I think we're showing here like a fourteen to fifteen-foot shared-use path, which includes like asphalt plus what they call shoulder, which is usually like decomposed granite or gravel or something. And then the other purple, lighter purple color are some right-of-way or other stuff to mention. The one thing being, the bottom right, so the southeast corner, note nine there, is identifying that that is a frontage of a potential future development parcel that if, with the right vision, could stipulate doing something similar like an off-street bike facility or something in that swath. So identifying that, identifying the need for some sort of setback or easement or something for, so that a future development, when and if it does happen on that parcel, provides the additional bike and ped infrastructure that might be needed there.
So would the whole road that's not there now, the one that's proposed, would that be part of future development, or is that something that the city would put in on their own?
You're talking about the north, the northeast?
Yeah, the north.
I can let staff respond, but my understanding is that that would be kind of planned and shown, but would not be added to the intersection until one or more of those developments would warrant it.
Yeah, so generally, developers build infrastructure that serves their projects and then either turn it over to the city to maintain turn it over to the city to maintain as a public facility, or it's maintained as a private facility, oftentimes with a public access easement, if it's a sidewalk, those types of things. And the design of those facilities is based on the intensity of the development.
That was the path?
Well, this is more for the north-south road, which is like an extension of West Cotati Avenue, where it's identified on some plans as, I think, Village Drive headed to the north off of 116.
So is the plan, does this look like this would take place before any development happens? Because if it does, we'll have a turn lane that goes to nothing.
So currently, the city has only funded the design of this project. We do not have funding to construct this project.
Right. To answer that, also, we would not put in a right turn lane to nowhere. It would be identified as something that would be built in the future in some interim condition.
So it'd be spaced for it, but it just wouldn't be marked?
More dedicated, like more like dedicated or reserved for that future need when that comes online? I've got my thing to work now. So taking a step back, so that was what we are showing as the reconfiguration of that intersection with, you know, in a, once development occurs as well. Taking another step back, this is looking at the same, kind of looking at the whole corridor, and looking at what we call cross-sections, looking on each side of the intersection. So if you're on the top left, this is what it might look like west of the intersection, looking west, where you have that one lane with an eight-foot shoulder, and on the left side, coming at you, if you will, there's a left turn lane, a right turn lane, one through lane, and a buffered bike lane coming at you. And on the right side, it's the other side of the intersection that we're showing, some buildings that represent what the current proposed projects may include, that shows how that Class 1 shared use path would integrate with both the roadway for motorized traffic, but also the development itself.
And on the bottom slide, where the current lighted intersection is, is that an appropriate distance to have another lighted intersection?
Yes.
And, as I say, and what would the speed limit on that be, and how far on the opposite side going down to Madrone, where there's the pocket turn lane, what would be the speed limit in there?
So I'll start, the spacing of the two intersections, of Redwood Drive and this one, there's, on a highway like this in Caltrans jurisdiction, the general rule of thumb is 1,000 feet between intersections, no less than, and this is a little bit more than 1,000 feet. So it's far enough away from Redwood to where they can be interconnected, synchronized, but work similar to two adjacent traffic signals. That's also one reason why a roundabout at this location could be problematic. If you have a traffic signal at Redwood and a roundabout here, one of them, if the queue spills back because of one of them, it adversely affects the operations of the other. We haven't done the detailed traffic analysis, but that's something that we would take a look at as part of the Caltrans process, to see how the spacing of it, and if we did do a trap, two different traffic control devices, how queue spillover and spillback might be affected.
Is a roundabout even allowed in this intersection, under the current ban?
There is a city ordinance about roundabouts, but this is a state facility. I'll let staff.
So the roundabouts are currently prohibited using the city, because I invite a vote of the citizens.
So but with it being on a state road, it could be allowed, it's kind of, is it unsanated?
If Caltrans chose to be the lead on this project, and they wanted to design a roundabout, staff is doubtful that our ban would prohibit that.
And this, has Caltrans been involved in this project yet?
Not yet, and we'll actually get to that in a later slide as to what the, what this, the process, sort of, the sequence of process. Going, saying something on the opposite side of that, if Caltrans is, during the process is, they will respect a local ordinance if the local ordinance is such that if the city wants to implement something, but there's policy against a roundabout, Caltrans would not tell them, no, you must do, you must go against your code to do this. They would typically defer to the local agency. But again, those are future conversations for us to have with Caltrans. And so Commissioner Gallardi, you mentioned about the speed limit. Speed limit is kind of independent of what we're proposing here. Generally, there's some new laws about speed limit setting, what is appropriate, what is consistent with local safety policies and whatnot, so I wouldn't say that this is necessarily going to trigger a change in the speed limit, but as development densifies and the character of the street changes, I would expect that we would want to encourage the speeds to be less and consider lower speed limits, but it's not kind of, it's kind of independent of the geometric changes.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering, because I mean, once you leave that one intersection, the speed goes up, but then there's going to be another intersection right away. Seems like that would not work.
And there's other, this isn't the only like state highway that kind of has that, the end of a built-up area into that country road feel, so I think as this reconfiguration and the land use changes occur over time, you would, it would feel less amenable to going as fast as some drivers do. And then there's policies and other speed limit setting pieces that can get from the local agency's perspective to kind of further encourage safer behavior. One thing about that, so the plan on the bottom here, it's a high level, goes all the way from Redwood all the way west of Alder. This is generally the area, the project area that we are studying from the environmental clearance, with the understanding that we want to, we don't want to just realign the intersection or fix the intersection, we want to fit that into a broader vision for the corridor, which is kind of represented by these cross-sections in this map, which is part of the current planning effort that we're doing. So these are just close-ups of the cross-sections that we showed. The area in between the roadway and the bike path that shows some shrubs and whatnot, that's generally what we are hoping to maintain and retain as part of the environmental, kind of the wetlands or other potentially non-pervious, impervious areas, sorry, pervious areas, which is plants and some wildlife, and we're looking at that as part of some technical studies to see what kind of potential habitats or environmental factors need to be integrated into this design. So it's almost like adding in the shared use pathway and separating it from the roadway helps create enough separation for a part of this area to be, continue to be planted and have a kind of a separation between the roadway and the path.
And how far back east does that shared pathway go? Does it go all the way to the next intersection?
The extent of it is, we're showing it in all of our sketches to go as far as Redwood as we can. It's going to be part of the cost estimates and understanding what would grant opportunities there might be. That being said, it needs to connect some to the bike and ped network, so through that design process, we're going to identify ways that are consistent with the already adopted bike and ped master plan, but also as part of the ongoing one now, which we'll talk about here a little bit, the next-gen item, but making sure that this project is calling for this type of connection and that it is carried out as far as it can to then be integrated into kind of the county, the county network and other city network as well. How it gets funded, showing that it's fully connected will help get secure funding. How much funding is needed is yet to be determined. That was just the other, the other cross-section, so kind of just talking through about what is, what are the next steps? So we've, this kind of represents our 10% design, where we've done some, the intersection realignment and some visioning on the corridor. We're initiating this conversation with you all tonight, and have already gotten some great feedback from the community. What we are hoping to, we are currently working on the environmental review, and once the, we have, we have provided, given some, been, received some comments to get some, to refine the design here, we will finalize the environmental review process, and at that time, we'll be able to start what's commonly referred to as the final design process, which is when we would initiate meetings with Caltrans, give them a very similar presentation that we did here tonight, and then they'll start asking about lane widths and shoulder widths, and we will be able to get into the details with them that we are including in all of this, to really identify what the appropriate review process is with Caltrans. There's three to five different ways Caltrans will review a project proposed by a local agency. This one is not the quickest, but maybe the second quickest in terms of administrative requirements. It's called the DIER process, which we're confident that, based on what we've seen here, we know what technical studies are needed to facilitate that process. And then from that, we'll be able to prepare an extra level of design plans that show the intersection reconfiguration and improvements kind of outside of the direct intersection so that it matches up with the existing, to match.
Or just kind of touch on that process a little bit, or why that's the correct process? Did your?
I will, I'll do my best. So the, Caltrans requires different levels of scrutiny based on what you are proposing. If there were bridges or other structural elements, they usually require a much more in-depth alternatives analysis to identify the appropriate structure and other impacts to, that the structure might present. Since we are, we have policy support for providing pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, and it's within, you know, it's not over, I think, $10 million, it kind of, it's, doesn't require a super detailed multi-alternatives analysis process. We're still evaluating alternatives like we've presented, but not in a Caltrans lexicon of where they basically require a really high level of design on multiple alternatives. You kind of find that on like an interchange project, where you do a lot of, a lot more planning and engineering to determine the right interchange shape. Because this is a local, more or less a local roadway, it's less, there's only a few options, and we know what those options should be per Caltrans requirements.
And in addition to the public comment that we're getting tonight, are there other points throughout this phase, or after you start talking to Caltrans, that will have community input?
Yeah, so what we anticipate, and we're open to changing this up, is to get the environmental clearance and those initial conversations with Caltrans, and we hope to go to Caltrans and saying, we've studied this, we've gotten feedback, the communities, the policies and the community input that we've gotten supports this project. That's kind of the first big step. Once we get there, we can then meet with Caltrans, and then have them agree, yes, this is the process to get this approved, is, whether it's DIER or some other Caltrans process. Then from there, we initiate, we actually do some additional engineering, and we'll actually do a detailed survey and really show where all these lines and edges of pavement would be. And then at that point, is when we would continue having, kind of come back to you all, share kind of, here's what we learned from Caltrans, here's what the design is gearing up to be as part of any. They may come in and say, we would suggest that you make sure your median is six feet wide or eight feet wide, and they'd give us some design direction that we can then bring back as part of a more enhanced design.
When I was doing some research, I was reading where Caltrans worked with NAPA on designing two roundabouts on Highway 29, one that they think just opened. So this is going to be a review process that they do? They're not going to be involved in a design process for us?
They would be reviewing the design, so as, so the sequence of design is 35%, 65%, 95%, so like the level of completeness in the package, they have design review during each one of those stages. So they're not designing it, but they are providing design comments from all their functional units throughout that process. So by the time there's a complete project, a design that's ready to build, Caltrans has seen it several times.
And is there, I mean, myself, I would much rather see a roundabout than a lighted intersection. There's a lot of, I think, positive benefits. I know one of the negatives that you had posted earlier was the cost of land acquisition, but then you also mentioned about the possibility of doing a land swap, so that things would take that negative out of there. Is there a reason that we can't go forward with both of those designs through this process and get further community input on that as that process goes along?
Staff.
I think, you know, as Jeff said, we're going to do an initial evaluation for Caltrans, but we can't, we can't design them both, you know, beyond this concept phase, just in terms of, well, in terms of cost, but also just policy right now for the city, for a city-led project. It would be a different, different deal, I think, if Caltrans were doing the project. If Caltrans did the project, I mean, they could, as you heard, in theory, build a roundabout if they wanted to, because they're not subject to our ordinances, but we, staff are when we bring designs to them.
So it's mainly driven by that ban?
Well, it's, I mean, I think it's a cost consideration to run two different designs at the same time, but.
I mean, I'm sorry, not considering roundabout, you know, as a primary project?
So if the, if there wasn't a ban, how it would go is we would consider both at the concept level and then the one that was superior in cost and technically superior would be the one that we would move forward on. But there's a lot of, I mean, as we sit today, there's, that's just not a consideration, really. So that's, yeah, that's where we are. Yeah, it's also part of the environmental study that we've also initiated. There's, anyway, there's a lot of reasons at the moment that we can't pursue that as our locally-funded project.
I'm just curious, because when I was doing research also, I noticed that Caltrans is currently doing a study titled "Moving Towards Roundabouts in California," encouraging communities to go that route versus lighted intersections. So if we had a groundswell in the community that wanted to put this back on the ballot to get that reversed, and with all the, you know, from, I've been reading the positive aspects of roundabouts, it seems like that would be a good direction to go, but there's that cost factor. As far as costs, I know you talk about grant funds, but is any of this covered under Measure M or Measure S funding?
The design, I mean, we're working on the design right now, and it's, you know, funded through like Measure S, for example, but construction's a whole nother thing, that's going to be significantly more expensive, and that's where we need a grant.
On the roundabout, I love roundabouts. I think they definitely have places where they're excellent and maybe some places where they might not be, depending on volumes of traffic and things like that. But around the safety issue and the Vision Zero, is there any difference between a roundabout and the signal intersection as far as safety for pedestrians and bikes getting across 116?
There are very effective ways to safely bring pedestrians and bicyclists through roundabouts, and some of the ones that have been built maybe 10-plus years ago don't quite have all the current practices associated with separation and the right amount of space. So yes, a roundabout can be designed to provide a high level of countermeasures that allow for better safety. It's not definitive on one is safer versus the other, it's a combination of factors, and there's well-documented safety benefits of certain treatments at roundabouts. One thing that I didn't, I glossed over earlier, Caltrans, as part of their planning process, will require a geometric and operational assessment of a roundabout, which means we'll take that exhibit and do additional engineering on that, both using traffic volumes and understanding how big that actual roundabout would need to be. And as part of that, we would also identify the amount of separation from travelway for motorized traffic and bikes and pets. What I would anticipate is that where bikes and pedestrians will be, will be much further from the roadway, so that they're, so that we would be able to isolate bike and ped crossings from people going 50 miles an hour approaching the roundabout east-west. So, but again, that's a design or concept level thing that we would identify.
And then you referenced the 1,000-feet difference between the signal at Redwood Drive and this intersection. Is there a minimum or ideal amount of space that you would have between a signal and a roundabout?
There's like engineering best practices that are out there, I don't have them offhand, but generally, it's part of the operational analysis, where if it's too close, one will spill back to the other. So looking at the longest eastbound queue of cars at the signal at Redwood, if it goes past, you know, where this roundabout could be, then that signal is not what makes this roundabout operationally fail, it would be the signal. So you kind of have to use them as a coordinated system when evaluating it. And, so yeah, there are definitely treatments to make it, to make a roundabout kind of as comfortable and safe for pedestrians and bikes. What we presented here is a signalized version that also provides all of the, you know, most of the appropriate bike and pedestrian crossing safety improvements as well.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
The, I'm not an expert on roundabouts, and so I'm just kind of curious as to, I guess, with the, with the street speed limits and of that corridor, what, you know, if there's some negatives to having it there, considering, you know, how fast the speed limit is and.
I wouldn't say, like, design considerations more so than negatives. Generally, roundabouts on. Like design considerations more so than negatives. Generally, roundabouts on high-speed facilities are kind of, are, get to be, they have to be bigger because the way round, one of the design inputs for a roundabout is the speed of the largest vehicle you would expect to be there to go down to a certain operating speed. I want to say it's around 20 miles an hour. So imagine long-haul truck, a truck going as fast as they can, 20, or not as fast as they can, 20 miles an hour through that, the amount of space that they would need to maneuver their truck, that actually creates the circle that the round, that the roundabout for motorized traffic exists. It's, I mean, it's not, it's not a negative, it's just that's how it's designed. And then the separation of that, of the roadway to a bike and pedestrian facility, the more it is, the more comfortable it is for somebody walking or biking. So that footprint can be very large in a way that would affect what's, what has been envisioned for the Parcells to the North and some, and it would encroach into some of the other one on the, on the southeast as well. So that and the fact that the LRSP identified a, a traffic signal as the recommended alternative is why, is why we're, there's policy support and established plan support for signal there. But that we will be evaluating the roundabout through the Caltrans process.
Is mainly because of the encroachment that was kind of one of the primary drivers of why it might not be?
Yeah, the sheer size of it and what it, how it would do for the adjacent areas.
And then, has there been any kind of cost analysis or is there any of a signalized intersection as opposed to the roundabout?
We have not done any cost estimates yet.
But it's just, rule of thumb is it's definitely much more expensive?
In a case where there's not much other than a two-lane roadway, the, the area that is built is, you're going to be doing a lot more roadway work with a roundabout, whereas it a traffic signal reconfiguration, it's a lot more of the signal infrastructure. I think both, both of those projects are well over $1 million just for the intersection alignment itself. But we know, but we haven't done any detailed cost estimates yet.
It'd be like twice as much?
Devils in the details, devils in the details.
And there was a concern about added traffic on West Qatati. So is that going to be part of the future study to kind of determine additional traffic in that area?
So we typically use volumes generated through the, the regional demand model. And by adding and creating a new intersection here, that demand model will then distribute the projected traffic over time. And if, if there was projected traffic to cut through West Qatati Avenue, I think there are definite measures as part of the projects to discourage that maneuver. And, and so that it's not as appealing for somebody to try to do that, which is kind of an intent to kind of keep, keep folks who want to stay on SR116 on SR116.
Yeah, that was a concern also when the Lowes was built. There's people are afraid that people were going to cut through West Qatati and increase traffic over there. But I just don't know. It's like, that'd be interesting to see if there is additional. I know they've got speed bumps along that road now.
Okay, are we ready to go to public comment? All right, I have some folks who filled out the comment form, so we'll start with Eris.
Hi, I'm Eris Weaver, Qatati resident and executive director of the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition. I have thoughts about roundabouts and pedestrian stuff, but I'm going to start with the bike stuff in case I run out of time. I'm not sure that the speeds and traffic volume on 116 makes Class 2 bike lanes safe. I'm a fairly confident cyclist and I ride my bike almost everywhere, but just Class 2 on 116, I'm not sure is going to get me out there riding. I like that you've got them buffered with that extra width, but I would really like to see them be Class 4 with the vertical elements. That really gives you physical protection from vehicles. I also noticed that both going eastbound and northbound, the plan shows the bike lane to the right of the right turn lane. So if I'm here and somebody, a car here is going to turn right when I go straight, that doesn't feel safe. And in two other places east of this location, we indeed have the bike lane in between the right turn lane and the going-forward lane, and that would be a much safer place to be. In fact, what I would do if it was as is on here with that right lane, and what my certified instructors teach cyclists is if, is don't be in a right turn lane if you're going forward. And so I would just go into that forward lane. So I would like to see those shifted over in between the right and the forward lanes. There was some discussion earlier about the Class 1, the two-way cycle track on the north side, and I couldn't hear all of it, so I didn't hear where the ends of it are, are planned to be. I love the idea of two-way cycle tracks when they're long enough to actually get from point A to point B, when they're just a short way and they end and then dump you out into a, a street inappropriately. They're not helpful and that, that actually is unsafe at the other end. So I don't know what this is going to do when it gets to Old Redwood Highway and how far it's going to go this direction. But what happens at the end of that is really important for someone getting on or getting off of a two-way cycle track. I love roundabouts and I'm so hoping that the fact that we now have a very nice one just over the border in Ronnet Park helps us motivate more of our voters to rescind the previous ordinance so that we have that traffic tool available to us once again. They do cut down on head-on collisions and T-bone collisions. And now, I will confess, I don't know about when you've got a fast state highway and then residential streets crossing. I don't know enough about that intersection to know whether that's appropriate, but you can just put me on the record as, as a roundabout fan. Thank you.
All right, next we have Neil.
Yes, good evening, Planning Commissioner. I've been advocating for family-style bicycling and pedestrians since we moved to Qatati some 25 years ago. When we first moved here and the property we bought, which was based on being within cycling distance from Petaluma, there was a bicycle path to be completed at the back. And we said, wow, this is a really good place. And once we purchased the property, we actually gave 15 feet of our property at the back to complete this bicycle path. And now we have a mile of creek and other areas that connect there that is family-style bicycling and pedestrian. And I think this is a really important thing, that we find places where we can, we can keep it very easy for crossing, for young people to cross, for seniors to actually cross. So when we come back to this, when you have a look at this junction and you have a look at it, how to get from the Qatati pedestrian network that exists on West Qatati Avenue and get across this road, I think is very important. On the north side, where it's identified that, oh, a Class 1, that's what I would call a family-style bike path, because there's going to be a lot of residents out there in the future potentially. But it really doesn't go anywhere. I mean, we haven't said what happens on the Redwood Drive end, but it's a big road that's actually around there. If we get to the other side, there's Alder Lane, and where is that actually going to end? I think that treatment has already been dealt with. There's already a building that's been built there. So, so that's not going to continue along there. So this is like two blocks of separated bike path along there, and that would be great for people to get out and walk, but they're going to want to cross to West Qatati or to the south side of Qatati. And when you look at a road, what do you think? You think speed of the vehicles. If I can't get a really clear way of crossing that road, then I'm going to stay away from it. That's what I hear adults talking about. It's all about safety. So on this junction design, I would recommend we look at how can somebody get from the West Qatati Avenue to across the junction. And I've done a markup that I've circulated to you. And to me, it means reducing the amount of fast traffic space that you're going to share with the road. So with that right-hand crossing that is in that pocket there, I would suggest that it's protected. There'd be another medium that pedestrians can walk across there. They can get to the middle and stop, that it should be protected in some way or the other with a, a crossing, gates of, not gates, but fence of some sort, like happens on East Qatati Avenue. So these are some questions that have come up on the concept that's there. Roundabouts are really great as well. They're much better for protecting the speed.
Okay, I'm sorry, Neil, I need to have you stop and send any additional comments that you have, so I keep us at our three minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next we have Lori.
I'd first like to address all this talk about roundabout bans. This, the roundabout ban is not about physical roundabouts. It's about, this is before my time. The citizens of this city came together because there was bad planning, unsafe ones that, projects that were being railroaded. The only way to stop it in the short term was a roundabout ban. And we've been stuck in this time zone, time warp since. There's been lots of talk, if you come up with good planning, you come up with, you involve the citizens and you listen to them and what they want, then there'll be a dual thing to repeal the, the ban and have good amendments to the, to general plan and DSP. And that's not what I'm hearing here. So I, it's not the physical roundabouts. We have a roundabout on Southwest that's, we share roads with, and nobody complains about it. So just, I don't want to hear anymore about roundabouts. Okay, real quick. In 1977, my parents went before the City, Qatati City Council pleading that something be done about the West Qatati Avenue and Highway 116 dangerous turn after my brother had been in an accident there with me in the car. Forty-six years later, we get a plan. I am disappointed in the little thought put into this proposed traffic improvement. This plan is not what I have waited all these years for. Do better. For one thing, it requires the construction of a road between the housing developers that has never been in the general plan. Another issue is this design doesn't consider the other intersections. From Redwood Drive, the lanes consolidate into one lane. Then they would go out to three lanes and change back to one lane by Alder Avenue. This improvement needs to be, see the big picture of how traffic will flow by Redwood, Drive, West Qatati Avenue and Alder Avenue, especially with the possibility of huge housing developments coming to the area. I also wanted to quickly say that also, the whole area, when I was growing up, is a swamp. I, with Judy Gilman, we got the tadpoles and frogs and everything there. And you haven't also dealt with the drainage problem there. Okay. And why do we need bicycle lanes on the highway? Would these bike lanes extend from Redwood Drive down to Madrone? I don't think I've ever been, seen, been, never mind. Actually, last few minutes. Lastly, this plan is very Qatati-centered, not highway-centered. I see long bank, bank backups to the light if there is only one lane through for traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional individuals that would like to come forward and speak? Do we have anyone online or on the call or Zoom?
Thank you, Chair Savage. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. And Lori Ann Barber, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I, Lori Ann Barber, I am a Qatati resident. I am a bicyclist at times and a pedestrian at times, so I'm very interested in this. I would, I guess, concur with many things that both Eris Weaver and Neil Hancock said. I am also a fan of roundabouts, a fan of roundabouts. Hard to know if this is really the right place for one, but I'm, would appreciate it if it was still in consideration, consider, especially because it's not actually Qatati property, state property. I also appreciate seeing the buffered bike lane. I love riding on those two-way bike lanes, but I agree that if, I mean, I feel like if it's one of those, if you build it, they will come. And I appreciate that, but it's really got to go, it's got to either go farther or, you know, encourage continuation of it at either direction where it's either to, the east and to the west, I think is important. And just to also concur with what Neil said, there are lovely places on the north side to walk and bike, and it's really scary currently to cross from West Qatati Avenue to get to the north side. And so I appreciate that this design is happening. But it seems like most of the conversation is about going east and west, although the crossing is certainly, we're talking a lot about pedestrian safety and I appreciate that. So I just want to keep that in the forefront, that there's good reason to cross the street by pedestrian or bike. So thank you so much for all the work going into this and the improvement that I hope will come to the west side of Qatati as it moves forward.
George Akel, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening. My name's George Akel. I represent the Qatati Commons Marketplace. We're the owner of about 10.6 acres on the north side of Highway 116 between Lowes and Monahan Pacific Site, which is referred to on the map as City Ventures Project. I'm just here, first of all, to offer some support because I think it's long overdue that the city has addressed some safety issues on this side of town. And I'm happy that they're taking the time to do this. In terms of the stakeholders, I'm not a resident of Qatati, but I'd like to at least ask staff, or at least to put in the record that, you know, the landowners are also consulted just so we can make sure that if things are consistent with past findings and past environmental approvals that have been done or the current ones or the future. Because the project, while proposed, has not yet been approved. I just want to make sure that we are sort of brought into the discussion to the extent possible. Thank you.
Okay, Chair Savage, let's do a Zoom public comment.
All right, thank you, Carla. Counsel, do we have any additional comments or questions or clarifications?
Thank you, thank you all for participating and thank you for being here. I want to ask, what, what's the purpose of this? If, if the purpose is not for safety, then what's the purpose? And if the purpose is not to keep Qatati residents safe, then what's the purpose? So to be very concerned about our pedestrians and not only our bicycle riders, but folks in power chairs, folks on skateboards, folks on the, those motorized doohickeys. I mean, they're all using the road and we need to be concerned about safety for, for those folks. And I'm so appreciative of people who wrote us letters and filled me in on the situation. I'm really grateful. I'm a new planning commissioner. I don't know almost nothing. And I'm here to say so. So you're teaching me and I'm grateful for it. And it's my responsibility to, Noah told me, to look down the road 20 years and see what's, what we're going to do. Well, this is a huge project. I don't think it's going to be redone. It's got to this point, like Lori mentioned, took all this time to get here. Here we are. We need the very best project for safety. I don't care what it is. And it doesn't, the value, the cost is insignificant to the lives that's going to be saved and the opportunity for- and the opportunity for folks to maneuver around. And why not connect us? And why not have this? I mean, yeah, I can see the frustration and I'm so grateful that, that this is coming forward and that we're going to have some perhaps development and some buy-in from others to make these roadways happen and the connectivity that Neil keeps talking about, the connectivity, the opportunity to move from point A to point B so you can stay on your feet or on your vehicle or in your chair and not get hit and not get, I mean, we, that's what the purpose is. So, and we need to go the extra mile also to get the input from more residents and folks that, thank you to Mr. Ekel for speaking, for all the people who are concerned. So I'm really grateful for everybody for being here and for your input. I mean, it's a holiday today and you're here. So I'm grateful. And to the staff for listening, putting it forward. Let's find the best project. Let's find the best one. And for everybody's safety. And point, and let's connect it all. I don't want a road to nowhere, really. Let's figure it out. We can do this. We're, and we're much smarter together. And if you need money, hey, maybe I can raise some money. I mean, I don't know. But let's do it. Let's do it. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you everyone for the comments. I was just looking at Mr. Hancock's, where he wrote in, and I just wanted to see if we could get a little clarification on the mock-up, the concept that he drew, where he shows the bike lane, the forward bike lane, you know, to the left of the right-hand turn lane. Is that, is that something that was considered in this design concept? And if so, kind of what the pros and cons were to that?
Yeah, I don't have a visual to show it, but the, just to describe what you're asking, just make sure, is the bike, so an in-street bike lane, where that, when the bike lane is in between a through lane and a right turn lane, that's a more traditional approach. And it works when, when a right turn can happen on a, what's called a permissive. Like they can, you can be there and kind of go. By putting the bike lane in there, a cyclist and adjacent travel or motorist can go forward while somebody's in the right turn lane. That is a more traditional way and that's something we could consider. What we went, tried to go kind of more protected where bike lanes stay as close to the edge of, of the roadway. And they only go when they have a green, whether it's a walk indication or even a bike signal. And the right turn lane doesn't go, has a red arrow or a no right turn on red while that bike is going. So it fully protects the two maneuvers in, in the, in the condition when the bike lane is in between the right turn lane and the through lane. Typically, that bicyclist can go at the same time, the right turning car can go at the same time as the, so you have generally cars on both sides of you potentially going, going at the same time. And there's actually, in certain situations, the amount of time a cyclist is in between those two lanes, it gets really uncomfortable after a couple hundred feet. And we want to make sure that we keep that as comfortable and safe and then control the conflict with a signalized component at the intersection. And there's a couple different ways to do it that we can expand on during the final design if we, we keep it there. One thing is, is what's, again, a protected intersection is when the cyclist is actually taking out, off of the roadway at the intersection. So they actually, maybe, might be able to show, am I able to show my presentation again? If I can get to the intersection, I can show, because on the north side, we're kind of showing that, where there's space for a cyclist to be outside of, kind of deviate from the roadway. So they kind of become more visible by traffic turning, but also they, they can manage their conflict with a site, with a pedestrian and cross in a, an area for them in the street rather than being pinched in between the traffic lanes. Okay. Yes, is there a way to maximize that? So, so it doesn't, okay. Oh, I have this. So it doesn't quite, can't quite see it here. But the, the way it is, is it's the, the space between where a cyclist is in the street and they get to the corner, that corner becomes a different, a protected corner where cyclists and pedestrians are now taken outside of the roadway so they cross with their own traffic control devices. It's not actually shown on this version and my pointer doesn't work. But envision if I'm a cyclist, oh, that, that's fine if you keep it down that.
Yeah.
That's green. But if I'm a cyclist and I'm in that right turn pocket where that sidewalk is shown, you can, we can open that up so that it's more of a corner that is a mixing zone for bikes and peds so that the crosswalk that's striped there can be more inviting and controlled for pedestrians and cyclists. It's like on the north, what we're showing is what's called a crosswalk, you know, which we all know, but it's also a cross-bike, which is just for cyclists. We could integrate something similar to that in a condition where we have a class, a buffered bike lane, buffered class two. But I think the envision, going back to the basis of it, was keeping them out, outboard of the right turn pocket because that right turn lane will never have a car going while a cyclist is going.
So when, even on a red, they couldn't come to a stop?
Correct. It'd be a right red arrow or a sign that says no right turn. And without that, and we went back to a more traditional approach that you would see, yes, we would then figure out how to get that bike lane out. It's just getting a cyclist from a bike lane through with a weave of a right turn pocket is, is never ideal. In my, my opinion, so if we can control it at the intersection, there's, you can do it both ways, but our preference in what we're showing here is, is through the signal.
And you mentioned you could even have a signal for the bike lane itself.
Yeah, there's, the devil's in the details. We'd have to see what, what is, what is available. But generally, a bike signal is used when you have a right turn, green arrow and red arrow over that bike lane. It's basically telling the cyclist, you have the right to go and you, there is nobody legally allowed to cross your path of travel, which is what we're advocating for here.
All right. Thank you for the information, the presentation. I think, you know, as Michelle said, safety in the vision zero is a huge component. You know, improving our bike and pedestrian network, which we're going to talk about next, I think is, is obviously huge. That whole West Cattati intersection thing is, is something that's heavily on everyone's mind. I think, you know, connecting the north part of 116 to the city is kind of the key of making our growth cohesive. And I think making sure that those pathways, both pedestrian and bike, go somewhere. And I would hope that in our next discussion, that, you know, where those paths lead to would be part of the larger plan so that, you know, we're all, I think we're all on the same page. I think we all want the same thing. And hopefully this is a, a good step on, on getting us in that direction. Anything else, Noah, on this topic?
No, we just really appreciate everybody showing up and continuing to engage. And you can email Senior Planner JP Harries if he'd like to be kept in the loop. We're creating a, we're creating a bicycle and pedestrian interest list and we'll use that to notify people on significant bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and big picture items. Email Public Works Department and their staff for comments specific to the West Cattati Interchange Project.
Can, can we have any, any visibility at the farmer's market at the Chamber of Commerce table or something?
This is the very beginning of the engagement process and more will come. We're looking at options for that so we don't have that engagement plan fully vetted, but more efforts will be made, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
All right, moving on then to our second matter at hand, the presentation on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan Update.
Thank you Chair Savage. My name's JP Harries. I'm a senior planner with the city of Cattati. We have two presentations tonight. My, I will start out with a brief initial presentation with a little bit of history of where we've been. And then Jeff will also provide another presentation. Vern Piers is the consultant that it, that has been awarded, basically the, the contract to develop a county-wide active transportation plan of which the city of Cattati will have a local component. It's been like that, in 2008, there was a county-wide bike and pedestrian master plan of which the city of Cattati had its own local plan. And then that was updated in 2014. And that was the last update to the bike and pedestrian master plan. So let's go to the next slide, please. You bet. Thank you, Eris. I can't get, I don't want to unplug it. Okay, there we go. So we've been calling it the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, but we're transitioning to referring to this as the Active Transportation Plan. And the reason is, is that it recognizes the other modes of active transportation besides just biking and walking. There's rollerblading and skating and scooters and e-bike share and a whole number of other ways to get around that is not vehicle-based. And so we're broadening the concept. It's not just bicycle and pedestrian anymore. It's Active Transportation Plan. So going forward, that's what you're going to hear staff referring to as is the Active Transportation Plan. Was put on the agenda just to avoid any confusion about what it is that we were talking about since it's been referred to the Bike and Ped Master Plan for so many years. So what it is, is it's a comprehensive citywide plan that focuses on providing a safe, attractive, accessible and integrated way for people to walk, bike and roll. As I mentioned, it is, will be part of the Countywide Active Transportation Plan. So there is a, an umbrella kind of concept and, not concept, but kind of sets the overall tone and gives a real regional framework to where, how our plan would, will fit into it. And, and then there is, within that, there are these standalone local plans. So the Cattati Plan will be its own standalone plan, its own list of projects, its own list of programs, and its own finer tuned goals, objectives and, and policies. This effort is being funded by Caltrans Sustainable Communities Grant as well as SCTA, as well as Cattati Local Funds. Next slide. So these are just the broad areas of what goes into a Cattati Active Transportation Plan, kind of starting at the top and moving clockwise. First of all is safety and comfort, and then I have parenthetically low stress. You heard about this tonight. There are very high-stress places to be as a biker or a pedestrian. And the goal is to create low-stress areas as much as feasible. There are people like Eris, for example, that might be comfortable riding on, on, you know, 116. I would never in my life take a bike down 116. So there's just, there are different, there's just different appetites for risk. And we need to recognize that and plan for that. Connectivity, you've been hearing about connectivity tonight. And this is, we're going to talk about what happened in 2021, 22. But part of what we want to do is not just connect within our own little community, but also develop connections with the region around us, to Petaluma, to Penn Grove, to Ronert Park, to Sebastopol, to just the broader network along the Laguna. So that's a big part of it. Mode shift, what I mean by mode shift is this is getting people out of cars, creating an environment that encourages people to, to want to take a different mode of transportation. So you're not always in your car. It's easy to walk. It's easy to bike to where you want to go to and more attractive. Accessibility, what, we, we need to plan for all, all people. And so that's, that included with the accessibility is community and community connection. And this means like basically inclusivity. We want to make sure that it's both the young, the old, the professionals, those that have mobility problems, everybody is included in this plan. And then recreation and health, obviously. By creating an active transportation plan, you're doing what we can do to also promote health and recreation. Next slide, please. So the Cattati Active Transportation Plan Update will, and Jeff will get into this as well, kind of look at several different factors. First is there'll be an evaluation of existing conditions. We've actually begun that. There'll be in community engagement. And then through those two efforts, you develop a series of goals, objectives and policies. And then, as I was mentioning, this is part of our, will be part of the Countywide Transportation Plan. So there's a regional context and routes and helps us to plan where we want to go. Through that, you start to develop what are, you know, the needs and demands that would be required to have an effective transportation plan. And then that is usually developed into projects and, and programs. And then, and then ultimately that's put into a user-friendly, graphically rich document. And it would, and it will cover all of these items. And that will be the standalone plan that the city will need to adopt. And we're targeting early 2024, February, March timeframe for that right now. Next slide, please. So we began this process with, SCTA, the Sonoma County Transportation Authority pursued a grant in 2020, the same grant. And we were going to join with them like we are now. However, they didn't get that grant in 2020. And so we decided, given the development proposals that were coming in on the west side as well as pressure from the community, that we would initiate an in-house update to the, to the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. So we did that in 2021. I'm going to talk about what we did do, but just to describe what happened, is we got into it and unfortunately, we don't get to pick our workload. Our workload kind of is delivered to us and we, quickly became clear that it was overwhelmingly too much of a project for just, you know, one or two staff to, to do it and do it right, especially with the idea of having, you know, regional connections as well as just the expertise of knowing, like how do, what are the proper designs at various intersections, things like that. At the same time, we were also hearing that SCTA was in communications with Caltrans in how they can improve their grant application. And it was looking very likely that they would receive a grant in the future with certain modifications. So staff chose to kind of back off a little bit, put our weight to see if this came through again. And luckily it did for us. And so that's why we're participating. And it's just a way for us to leverage our dollars and our, our efforts, I think, to get a much better product.
So the work that you were able to complete on the in-house update, will that move forward in this new work or will it just be set aside?
Oh, no, absolutely, no. That was a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of engagement. As a matter of fact, that board that's right behind you, Chair Savage, is, came from the last farmer's market last, and, that we attended. And what those are, if you can see, those are little pins that people placed into the board. I mean, this is kind of low tech. It's not, they do it on computers now a lot. But this was a way that where people could like, you know, identify a spot. And each one of those numbers relates to a comment card. And so we understand, you know, what people were trying to tell us at each one of these areas. But it was a nice way to engage. And we did that at many different farmer's markets as well as, we did actually have an online survey map. It was done as part of the local roadway safety plan, which is incorporated into our Bike and Ped Master Plan Update. So we did all that. And so, actually, I'll, I'll run through it. So we started the meeting, we kind of did this kickoff. So this is the re-kickoff of the Active Transportation Plan. So it was in late September of 2021 that we kind of kicked it off. We were trying to be present. We were trying to be present at the farmer's market, the Bike to Work. And then we had that online interactive map with the LRSP. This was another good thing that I think that, you know, in hindsight, we're kind of, I mean, at staff level, we don't regret that that was delayed as two major efforts happened between twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two. And that was the development of the Local Roadway Safety Plan, which helped us to identify really significant problem areas within the city that need addressing. And then the other was Vision Zero Plan, which is a countywide plan for reducing accident, or actually eliminating accidents by, not accidents, but severe deaths, severe injuries and deaths by two thousand thirty. All of that is going to kind of help to inform this plan and help to coalesce and put those plans into action through the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. We also did some community surveys and we had promotional flyers. And we're at, we have an active website page for this, which we're going to update and integrate into the website that Fair and Peers will be putting together. Next slide, please. So I just mentioned this. There's that, a big part of the effort was getting this data through the Local Roadway Safety Plan and the Vision Zero. What you see down there on the bottom, on the top left, are kind of hotspots of bike and pedestrian collision data. And that same kind of data is repeated down below. And these, well, the Local Roadway Safety Plan's a document, but the Vision Zero actually has an online database that, or we call it a dashboard, where you can go and you can look at that. And you can under, you can look, point at each one of these and understand what happened there and why is it there. You know, what you want to do is avoid these, but what it helps is to know where are your problem areas. And then going forward, you design to avoid creating maps like that. All right, next slide, please. We also began our study of existing conditions. And that's identifying where we had network gaps and where there's barriers, where there is the accident and moving violation hotspots. Where there is unsafe or uncomfortable conditions, that's the level of traffic status, stress, safety needs, wayfinding, and other planning documents. One of the, one of the criticisms that we had and one of the reasons why we were receiving so much pressure to develop our plan is we have the general plan with certain inconsistencies with our old Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, and especially on the west side, where we have these developments coming in. So we want to bring all of that into alignment so that it's all, it's very clear where the city wants to go and what our policy is. And I think that's my last slide, but let's click one more forward. Yeah, that's it. And so now I'd like to turn it over to Jeff, who will talk about what they're going to do to help us.
Hi again. So I'm actually sitting in for a bigger team on our Active Transportation Plan. One of our key, key teaming partners, Eleanor Leschner is out here. She, she'll be one of the local plan leaders in Kattati. She actually, we worked together, Fair and Peers, for many years. So excited to finally get to work with Eleanor again, as she leads her own firm. So I am a traffic engineer, complete streets engineer. I am not leading the countywide Active Transportation Plan until it gets into some of the more project-focused stuff and cost estimating. So I'm kind of sitting in for the, our project manager, Aaron Ferguson, who, who is leading the countywide effort. And as I mentioned, each local agency as part of that has a kind of a local plan lead, Eleanor being key for Kattati. Great, great background. I'm going to cycle through this pretty quickly because a lot of the stuff that JP touched on is in this PowerPoint as well. So this is just a quick overview of kind of the countywide piece and how it fits into the local plan as well. Just, just a little update about Sonoma County and the unique place that it is. As JP mentioned, what ATPs are, they serve for the policy and program spine to help identify, seek funding for, and implement projects. So we're excited to that, working with SCTA and other cities to get kind of all of the plans synced up and be complementary to one another so that kind of we look at the county as a whole, but also realize that every local agency has their own unique challenges and helping that to put in the right pieces to help kind of establish a path to make things better. The scope of work for the countywide piece, it kind of mimics at the local, local city level as well. As I mentioned, it really starts with some detailed technical analysis. So the Vision Zero process and the LRSP did a lot of analysis. There's more stuff that we can do at the local agency level to really identify those hotspots and understand where, where those potential countermeasures and safety issues could be and really understand what state of the practice is related to Bike and Ped activity, access, circulation, and making sure that we're putting the right pieces together. Eventually, then each agency separately, independently and collectively, will have an engagement plan. Eleanor will be key in that role, as well as our other, one of our colleagues, to really understand how best to get in front of the community, whether it's at farmer's markets, whether it's at other pop-up type events with regular feedback from you all as well and other, other opportunities. Then we're going to do a pretty rigorous project and program identification process where, you know, we get, you know, dozens and dozens, if not hundreds, of potential project ideas and try to look through kind of at a high level where the low-stress bikeway and pedestrian networks want to be. Then we do a pretty rigorous kind of implementation plan, both at the local and the countywide level to match up where the grant opportunities are with the programs and policies that the local agencies care most about. Big testament to SCTA for really being comprehensive in securing funding, funding and establishing the basis through the LRSP, the Vision Zero work, and now the countywide Active Transportation piece. It's really going to set a foundation for a lot of funding opportunities that independent cities wouldn't necessarily have as much, much success at. But since we're kind of doing this all at once together with other cities, it really helps tell the story of one connected county with local, with the local cities having their own kind of standalone document, as JP mentioned.
Has there been a process like this countywide?
Yeah, this is, I mean, it's not overly common, but there are other counties that have taken this approach just because of other cities where you have smaller agencies that don't necessarily have the, the staff needs. What JP described in terms of staff limitations is common to many. So the countywide or the regional MPO is usually, is, takes it upon themselves to help kind of pool the funds, pool the ideas, and get that in place.
Was your question specific to Sonoma County? Have they done it before, or was this in general?
No, it was actually, I was going to call that, that was interesting.
Well, yeah, there is the current countywide Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, of which Kattati has its own local plan. And I don't know of Dana, who is with the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, would like to speak.
Is that the two thousand and eight plan or the two thousand and fourteen?
It was a two thousand and eight plan that was updated in two thousand fourteen. I don't know if there's anything else.
Yeah, that's correct. Thanks, JP. I'm Dana Troy with the Sonoma County Transportation Authority and managing this project. Yes, the two thousand and eight plan kind of started the framework for the countywide plan acting as an umbrella and updating local plans that are underneath that umbrella at the same time. So that two thousand and eight plan was a large effort with consultant support. And that was updated in two thousand fourteen. That effort was actually done more at a staff level with SCTA staff and local jurisdictions. So we are following a model that we have done before.
Thank you.
So this is just an anticipated outline of the types of elements that these plans will include, kind of looking at it again from the regional, from the regional connection perspective, but also it's local, at the local community level. And then understanding what the implementation strategy should be for each local agency and matching it all with adjacent cities and other jurisdictions as well. JP mentioned a little bit about bicycle level of traffic stress. This is a graphic that indicates the level of comfort certain cyclists have on the roadway. And really, there's, there's a, there are some folks that will always bike. There are some folks that will never bike. It's the folks that are kind of with the appropriate infrastructure would change their mode shift. Those are the kind of the, we want to make it as safe and accessible for all and really understanding those user groups. And that's why redundant or duplicative or parallel opportunities for folks to cycle and walk on different infrastructure is useful. That's kind of one of the kind of methodologies or approaches we take to our planning. Included in the ATP will be the kind of state of the practice and the implementation of different components such as industry best practices, whether it's from NACTO, Caltrans is actually adopting some pretty, some newer complete streets bikeway standards and really understanding the opportunities to bring in kind of the state of the practice, the suggested best practice, and bringing it to both the county and the local level. Understanding the effects of, and then the infrastructure needs of micro-mobility, which are those gas-powered scooters or other things, you know, whether it's e-bikes or other things that are not just a traditional bicycle or, or another, just somebody walking. And really leveraging opportunities for quick-build projects or projects that can quickly be implemented through the use of temporary means as a pilot to test and refine projects for quicker implementation. And really understanding the other potential amenities that can make walking and biking more comfortable, whether that's street trees, bus shelters, and other things that are kind of not necessarily stripe on the ground, but they will make the overall user experience better. We do, we'll have a, we'll have a robust community engagement plan as part of this, both at the local level, but also regionally, which Eleanor will have a pretty big role in as well. We are really excited to kind of see and kind of leverage all the great work that staff has done already and as well as at the county level with SCTA's done over the recent years to really build on and not just ask the same questions, but really get into some programs and projects that can really kind of shift the needle in terms of getting people walking and biking safer. This PowerPoint slide doesn't look like the line work showed up, but basically, there are different classes of bike facility per Caltrans vocabulary. And traditionally, class threes, where there's sharrows on the pavement, and class twos, which are just one stripe between traffic, the motorized traffic lane and bike lanes. Those are generally not as comfortable, are pretty much always not as comfortable as a more, a more thorough bike facility, such as a class four or bike boulevards or even shared-use paths. So really identifying, not saying, oh, let's put class two bike lanes everywhere. It's, it's really identifying, let's put class four and class one bike facilities everywhere we can if we want them to be there. If we don't want them to be there, let's make sure that there's a parallel route that does provide that connection and that access for all. There's quite a big toolbox of pedestrian-type improvements, whether that's adding sidewalk, filling sidewalk gaps, adding landscaping, improving or establishing new crosswalks, traffic control, crossing devices like a rectangular rapid-flashing beacon, and other elements that make the pedestrian access and connection a little bit easier, a little safer. There's quite a bit, this is just six that are indicated, but there's, there's many, many, many more that will be floating in as part of the toolbox that we can implement. So the project, the overall project manager, Anne Ferguson, who's in our San Francisco office, is one of our grant experts and has secured funding for a lot of agencies over the years. So through her experience on the implementation front, we'll be able to identify the appropriate foundation to build off the LRSP, the Vision Zero, and now this ATP to really set up all local agencies to be effective and successful in targeting the appropriate grant funding for their projects. I think that's kind of going back to the SR one sixteen topic. That's actually one of the things we will be doing is using the same sort of understanding the grant funding landscape to match the best opportunities, to different opportunities as they, as the projects and programs get ranked. There, we are going to be doing a lot of community engagement, but also a lot of milestone reporting back out, getting input and really, you know, talking, writing updates to and getting questions and from you all, as well as from staff, to make sure that over the course of the next, you know, six, six to nine months as we work towards this, this plan, to really make sure that it's inclusive and getting the input, both kind of making a two-way communication so that this local plan is as good as we can make it to kind of set us up for longer-term success. A quick, just a little schedule, I think JP mentioned, February, March of two thousand twenty-four is kind of the final plan target right now. There's the, the initial phase, as I alluded to, was, was really just some additional analysis, understanding there's a lot of data out there. We're going to be looking through that and developing a detailed existing conditions assessment, really understanding the needs and opportunities for, for the roadways and corridors along, along the city streets.
Just a quick question on this. I was looking at the schedule that was included in the information. And on the public engagement and activity, it's kind of an ongoing process. Is there any particular focus time or begin time when a more earnest effort for public input would be started?
It's still at the very beginning of developing that and establishing that plan. So we don't really have that yet. But it will be communicated and revised for staff involvement. So any comments about that, it'll be coordinated with the appropriate folks. So it's not, it's not just going to be done in a, in a vacuum or whatnot. It'll be digital, it'll be in person, it'll be as robust as we can make it. I don't know if there's anything in any details you want to add. And then from there, there's, as I alluded, the policies, programs, projects. And then from there, then we develop that into, put that into the document. So we document everything that we've been kind of analyzing, discussing, and presenting so that there's an actionable plan built at the end of that. So just another way of talking about the schedule, the February to twenty, February, March, two thousand twenty-four, because of all the work that JP and staff have done over the last couple of years, that the Kattati Plan is going to move faster than some of the other local agencies. So we have the, we have it scheduled to be finalized in, in February, March, and not at this, and there would likely be other agencies, cities in Sonoma County that won't have it done by then. So there'll be some opportunity for adjustments throughout, but we're still targeting to complete it by February, March of next year. I think with that, any questions or comments?
What was the countywide plan scheduled to be completed?
November of two thousand twenty-four, so the end of next year.
Years ago, we had what was called Walkable Kattati. There was a lot of talk about filling in all the gaps. And so then I'm looking at the proposed bikeways, pedestrian projects, and project priorities. And everything, except for I think one, is marked high. But there's gaps in our community that don't have sidewalks. And since two thousand nineteen, with COVID, there's, our community, their habits have changed. And so there's a lot of people that are walking their dogs, riding the bikes on some of our streets that don't have sidewalks. So that seems to be missing from this.
I didn't, I didn't clarify that. We are doing a sidewalk gap assessment as part of that data analysis, where we'll be actually identifying sidewalk gaps on the major roadways so that we can understand kind of where those gaps actually are, map them. And so that when we start looking at corridors of interest, we can see and match where those sidewalk gaps are to kind of use that as, as part of the project list, really.
And in this, in the planning processes, there are like a priority of filling in the gaps before starting new projects that, you know, to complete the current infrastructure we have before banning out?
It's not doing one versus the other, but it's understanding that there's a need to do column A while we're doing column B. And by establishing them as projects as part of the countywide Active Transportation Plan, the, the local document, that there will be a supporting documentation that shows where those gaps are so that as opportunities exist for funding and filling those gaps, they're, they're capitalized upon. The policies and methods to get there is part of the implementation piece. And in other, is part of other Active Transportation Plans that sometimes becomes part like a CIP, capital improvements, approach, or in other ones, understanding where the corridors, where there's development planned, making sure that there's specific language prepared for the requirements on development to fill in those sidewalks. So it's a cutthroat, multi-pronged.
And just kind of for my own reinforcement, my understanding is that while I think most of these gaps are identified, the resolution to filling them in live in various plans depending on, would that be, a gap be filled when the road work is done and resurfaced? Or does it require purchasing private property to do it? So these all live in various plans. But what you're going to do is just look at the major thoroughfares and kind of resurface where those gaps are?
And put it all into one document.
One document, okay, that's nice.
And with enough understanding of where those gaps are and if there's, within the proximity of a school, it might be a priority project to fill gaps that are within a certain distance from schools or community centers. And that could be, you know, the way that projects are prioritized. And that could be the way that projects are prioritized, and again, grant funding opportunities identified that kind of help facilitate those higher priority pieces. While not losing sight of all the projects are valid projects, they just all can't be done at the same time.
In some of the reading, I came across an organization that ranks cities on their bike friendliness and pedestrian friendliness, like gold, silver, bronze, that kind of thing. It's the League of American Bicyclists. And I saw where Sonoma, I think, is a bronze, and Santa Rosa's a gold, they go on up to like diamond and platinum or something. Has Katati ever engaged that information to kind of see what we're doing? Are we on the road to getting a bronze, or a silver, or a gold, just as a benchmarking exercise?
Looking to our audience experts, Chair Savage, we have not, but I think that's a great thing to endeavor towards.
Yeah, I think that could be, as I mentioned, a benchmark type of thing, to have a goal of how the biking community views our efforts. All right, do we have other comments or questions from the commission? Okay, turn it over to the public then. Does anyone want to come up forward? I do have a couple names, we'll start with Eris.
Thanks, Eris Weaver, Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition. I'm really happy that this update is happening, although I kind of have a love-hate relationship with these plans, right? You need them in order to get funding, in order to set priorities, but I sometimes think if we spend half the money that we spend on the plans on actually doing things, we'd have work done. But in this case, there are, like, some of the classes of bike infrastructure that were shown didn't exist when our last update happened. So that's a really positive thing. I wanted to speak to the League of American Bicyclists thing, because I've been working with that a lot with other jurisdictions and other businesses. So the League of American Bicyclists offers this bike-friendly community, bike-friendly business, and bike-friendly campus certification program. And so the process to apply is fairly, the application is big and daunting, but it's meant to be educational as well as evaluative. It has everything you could possibly do, even though nobody could really do all of it. So Santa Rosa's got silver, that they're applying again. I forget which other, but yeah, Katati, to my knowledge, has never applied. But I think it's a good process for anyone that I've talked to who's gone through it, whether it was a city, or a business, or a campus, because it really gets you seeing what are all the possibilities, things you could be doing, some that might be really easy. And so I'm happy to talk with anybody and share what that looks like to work on it. But I think that's all I have to say about that, but yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Neil?
Yes? Good evening, council. I guess we've got our cards on there for a change. So I've been on the previous bicycle preparation plans when they were going through the 2008, particularly I remember, and putting the list together. So there are lists on there, and there has been a lot of good work that has been done since then. Just want to say that we have been moving forward. But at the same time, it just feels on some of us that I, and I pointed out that one picture of a failure on the Valparaiso Bridge when it actually was completed in 2008, and it hasn't been completed since, it hasn't been finished then. So it was just coming off the bridge, it just, a wheelchair can't use it. So some of these things seem to take a long time. Now, really appreciate that we're going down the path, and I certainly like all of the acronyms and everything in there. And as on FEAR and PEAR's website, it actually says that the amount of deaths on the roads has really gone up in the last few years. So while COVID happened, less vehicles on the road, but more deaths because vehicles were speeding. And so all of this is how do we make it a safe space in the urban settings? And just to bring up, we have some places like Valparaiso, which is going to be very expensive if we ever have to put sidewalks on it, on some sides there, but there's other ways of making sure that it's safe to share, I think. There is a flashing light that's going in there. I mean, I'm looking at flashing lights around Roanoke Park, and they're very aggressive in the way they're necking the road, actually saying to motorists, this is part of the road that you want to be on. So I hope we have this analysis that can bring in these other ideas of being able to have the vehicular connectivity, but really make it safe for pedestrians and bicyclists and young people as well, which means designing the road for a particular speed, getting the motorists, getting the vehicles to actually see that speed. I've seen parts of San Mateo County that have had it. We can definitely see in San Francisco the way it's going. Petaluma's talking about it, Santa Rosa's got places as well. So on the picture of this plan, I just point out, it's not a family picture. It's just a picture, I know, but I think we really should orientate the thinking on this to families around the community, because if we can design it for them, then everybody else will fit in. The long-distance cyclists, the spandex cyclists, will take to the roads and they'll make the best use of the conditions and stuff. But let's keep it a family approach in there. Thank you very much.
Yes, Laurie?
I didn't plan on talking about this issue, but I like, one thing I do like is that it talks about active transportation needs, including accessibility. And this city is not accessible for anyone with disabilities, or we have a much more aging population, we've aged in place in Katati, and we need more looking at where bicycle paths are, where the cutaways are, and things like that. Like, we have cutaways to rocks in certain places in Katati. And you can't put your walker over, you can go up the ramp, but you can't get it over the rocks. There's a lot of practical things that need to be looked at. I know a lot, I have a lot of contacts, if anybody needs information about accessibility, I write pair transit, and I know a lot of everybody, I worked with the disabled here, and I know the problems with accessibility. And I'm hoping that we can improve it, especially as we all age in place. I have an 86-year-old mother who, oh, the other thing is, we need sidewalks. Even like pair transit buses, they have trouble when they put the lift down onto rocks. We need sidewalks. I'm lucky to have a sidewalk, but like, there was a woman on West School Street who's very disabled, and they don't have a sidewalk, might have one soon, but they've always had trouble getting her onto her lift because the way the, so, those kind of things that need to be considered too for the disabled, as well as bike and pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber want to speak? Do we have anyone online or Zoom?
Thank you, Chair Savage. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Chair Savage, looks like that'll end public comment.
All right. Any other comments or points of clarification from the commissioners?
In terms of accessibility, and thank you for speaking about this, I'm also concerned about folks who are blind. And I don't know if our signals have sound options, but I would like to consider that. And I appreciate, again, everybody who's coming forward and helping me understand. The, this is significant, what's being put together to help everybody get out of their house safely and maneuver about. And so I'm grateful to everybody for your input, and hopefully we can put together something that is safe, accessible, and available to all modes of people who are moving about our community without a vehicle. So, yeah. And I would like to also consider having roads that are only available to no vehicles. I mean, I don't know how that would look, but just having options for humans in their modes without vehicles. Safety matters to me. And everybody who comes into this town, I would like for them to come here safely and leave safely, and spend money while they're here, of course.
Thanks for the presentation. Could you maybe give a little more clarification around, or background around how, once the plan's developed, certain projects will be prioritized or funded, or just kind of, you know, how we would take the plan and then put it into action?
Yeah, I can speak more broadly. I know that's, kind of, the details will be worked out as part of the process, but generally, as part of an active transportation plan, the data analysis will kind of, and the community engagement piece will identify, will throw everything on the wall, and everything that can stick will stick, and then it comes down to how much can we realistically implement, or in terms of dollars, or in terms of lane miles, or some other metric. And then those, and how we identify where those priorities were, are identified through a variety of different metrics, whether it's safety, access, or other kind of data-supported and community-supported variables. And then generally, the implementation piece then says, well, of these 10 projects, maybe there's six that do, that are corridor bike improvements, and four of them are massive pedestrian crossing and sidewalk safety. Well, here's six different grant opportunities that are generally every two or three years, and these three could be good candidates for these four grants, these other two could be candidates for this other one. And then it's identifying, so that's when staff, once the patent has been published, staff has that kind of next step checklist of these priority projects, these grant awards, and then understanding how to kind of seek the funding for those projects, whether it's more planning money or the actual implementation money. Generally, that's how it works with quite a bit of content underneath the surface. But yeah, curious of JP.
And I would just add to that, too. So as I mentioned, developers often build a lot of the infrastructure that the public benefits from, and so having these plans in place through maybe greenfield areas that there is not a lot of development now, will allow us to ask the developers to make those improvements alongside their projects, because once you have the plan and the need identified, that gives the city the ability to ask that that be built as a part of a project. So that'll be one element. And then another one to point out is the city council, working with Public Works Department and the city manager's office, has prioritized some of these other projects that are in areas that are fully developed. We're not going to have the ability to ask the developers to participate in that. Maybe there's not as many grant opportunities for these types of projects, and so the council has allocated some of their discretionary funds and put it into the capital improvement projects that the commission reviewed just a few weeks ago. And so there's a sidewalk gap closures project that actually is going to bid, and then there's some bike and ped infrastructure improvements that the council asks be prioritized in the future years. So it's a combination of grant money, developer construction, and city funds.
Just curious, I know this is thinking probably way outside the box, but I know what development builders usually have to put, set aside funds to go to schools to help offset impacts. Do you know of any community has ever done anything like that to offset impacts of building a walkable community? So, you know, a fee that would go towards linking their projects with other parts of the community?
Yeah, so I'm not aware of like a pedestrian-specific fee, or a bicycle-specific fee, but we do have a traffic impact fee, and that does go to fund multimodal projects. So not just automobile traffic, but bicycle and pedestrian. And developers who build are required to pay into that on a square footage basis.
And is that, how does our fee compare to what other communities charge?
You know, they're kind of all different. And so in order to have a fee, to establish a fee, you have to identify a need.
Right.
And then a list of projects to fund or address that need. The cost of those projects are then allocated or kind of combined to come up with a number, and then that number's used to create a fee. One of the challenges with that is, of course, that fee was created 10 years ago, it doesn't always keep up with inflation, but it does give you a kind of a nest egg to fund or put projects' money towards some of those projects. I don't know if the city manager would like to add?
It's a good description. And there's, in the current traffic impact fee program, there are, in addition to road projects and safety projects, there's also bicycle and pedestrian-type categories of projects, both specifically identified and also generally citywide. So that's, that is currently the source of, you know, sort of, impact fee money that we'd be using for things that aren't directly adjacent to a development, that we've built as part of the development, but could be some sort of citywide improvement.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much for the presentation. I think this is something that I sense a little bit of excitement about, that it's been maybe a little stalled or gray. We have old plans and new updated general plans, and these things haven't necessarily been married together. So I think doing that will give everyone a lot more confidence in what's going to happen moving forward, and things that hopefully will be very thoughtful and well-executed for the town. All right, let's see. Do we have any other reports by staff?
Well, just briefly, and thank you to all the consultants who took the time to come tonight, the community members who participated, we really appreciated getting all your comments and you all taking the time. Just I wanted to announce, on June 2nd, the city received a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development certifying our housing element. So thank you to everyone in the community and decision-makers who participated with us through the last year and a half to get that accomplished. It's a really big deal and will allow us to start stepping into some of the implementation efforts to address some of the challenges we saw with housing in the community. So look for more to come on that, but that was a very big deal and really, well, much appreciated. Along those same lines, ABAG MTC, city staff had applied for a grant to fund or assist with funding the Centerra Way specific plan, and we were successful in getting that grant. That's $415,000. That should cover the total cost of updating the specific plan for Centerra Way. Some of the community members will know that Centerra Way was originally envisioned as kind of a mixed-use office neighborhood. This plan is over 20 years old, and this grant will fund pivoting that over to a more transit-oriented neighborhood, taking full advantage of the SMARC station, which is now up and running, and trying to look to get more housing built in that neighborhood as opposed to offices. And then lastly, just wanted to kind of take the time to appreciate, while it's unfortunate that we weren't able to get all the traction that staff would have wanted to with the bike and ped, I think you were able to witness some of the synergy that we're able to create through the county's effort and really leverage some of the real expertise, neither JP or myself are transportation planners, and so while we do wear that hat occasionally, we just really appreciate being able to be part of that team, and I think the community will really benefit from getting those experts involved. So with that, that concludes the department report.
Well, kudos to you and your team on getting the letter for the housing element. That's no small feat, and I know there's lots of cities that are still out there hanging. So thank you very much for all your diligence on that. And also for securing the grant for the Centerra Way plan, that's another great, $415,000. That's a great accomplishment. Do we have any reports by commissioners? All right, then, did we have any items received after the agenda was posted?
Just the comment letters which were provided in reference in the previous discussion.
All right, then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move the adjourned meeting.
Second. Second.
I'll second.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Do we need a vote?
I don't think so. Do we need a vote?